Your name and your address. You may speak for a maximum of five minutes. Any comments?
My name is Jesse Stavobian. My address is 9620 West Barnard Avenue, Springfield. I would like to speak about item 16.
Go ahead. Thank you.
So I currently have a child that just completed 4K at Hales Corners Elementary.
I have a child that completed 4K at Hales Corners Elementary. I have another child that falls into the category of early admittance where her birthday falls in between the time period and that's for this upcoming year. She's shown a concern about wanting to go to school and my concern is that this policy gets addressed and put into place prior to the upcoming 2017-18 school year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no more audience members to comment, we'll go on to item four, Student and Staff Spotlight, and we'll discuss the Hales Corners Elementary PBIS Silver Award. Go ahead, Ms. Comas.
Well, you can see the people in blue here. Had this great idea that we should wear our T-shirts and look who forgot hers. So just want to take a moment to share the great accolades that we've received from DPI and Wisconsin RTI Center. And just to let you know, and we've got a couple of folks that are going to speak a little bit and some are here just for moral support, but we have, since 2013, been on a journey of exploring positive behaviors interventions and supports. And we initially began with a tier one team and now we, as you can see from the letter, have a second tier for over a year now with fidelity. So both teams have internal coaches. There you are, Allison. Allison Schnorr is our internal tier one coach and Kami Kaburka is our internal tier two, but she's home just having had a baby. And then we, for both of our teams, have an external coach who's served us all these years and Kathy Westfall is our external coach. Some of you might remember her as a former guidance counselor of ours at HCE. So I'm going to let them do a little bit of talking now.
External coach sounds like sort of a strange name or title, but it just means that the external coach is someone who is not in the building on a daily basis and comes in perhaps with a different vision or a different set of eyes to look at things and to help be liaison to the PBIS technical coordinators and things as well. PBIS is a program, Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. It involves all students and all staff members. We work to have secretaries and custodians and lunch people and everyone be included and trained in the program. It's a multi-level system of support. There are three tiers, universal, which is all kids in the building, targeted, which is kids who perhaps need a little bit more support, and then there's tier three is an[259.94][259.97]intensive, more intensive support for kids who need that. It is a mirror image of response to intervention, which is the academic side. So if you've heard about interventions and things with response to intervention or RTI, this is the behavioral side and it's a mirror image of it. The program or system is data-based and data-driven. We use data management systems to tell us what grade level perhaps is having more difficulty, what area we're having more lack of meeting expectations. And so Cindy over here always laughs because she says, "Yeah, you're talking about data again." We work very hard at being data-based. The key elements are teaching behavioral expectations, safe, respectful, and responsible. There are lessons that the team and the rest of the staff has created to teach all of what we expect and those lessons take place in the area at the site of what behavior we're talking about. So lunchroom expectations are taught in the lunchroom. Bathroom expectations are taught in the bathroom. And also reteaching is another key element. So if we find that kids aren't meeting behavioral expectations as we would expect, then the lesson is re-taught, whether that's a whole class, whether that's the whole school, or whether that's five children. Consistent expectations across the school are very important. Frequent positive feedback to students as they meet behavior expectations, catch them being good, that include both verbal and physical acknowledgements. Discipline referrals are filed when behavior expectations are not met and there's a major referral, which is for a more severe infraction, and that's handled by the office where minor offenses are handled by the teacher. Students who have two or more discipline referrals are offered behavior interventions as part of tier two. The system is implemented by a team of staff members, including the principal teachers and aides, and one tier is implemented at a time. So we're not at the end of our journey by any stretch of the imagination. We have much more work to do on tier two and then move into tier three at a later time. Any questions? That's a whole, that's four days of training in two minutes, so. Any questions? Yes?
So you're an external, meaning so do you split your time at Edgerton or are you just full-time or what?
No, I'm retired. And so when the team started working down the road and thinking of adopting and implementing PBIS, Lori asked if I would like to come back and be external coach. And that is not the norm. Most schools have someone who is a district person, you know, who is a full-time district employee, but I really enjoyed doing it and so I was very happy to be asked.
And what level do we get the parents involved?
Oh, is anybody talking about parent involvement? No? Okay. Parent involvement is another very important part of it. So parents were informed when we started of what, how PBIS works and that's repeated every year. Do they still sign? They still sign. Brochure goes home every fall, they sign. And in any case where there is a discipline referral, that always goes home in paper, on paper, to be signed. So, and we're also working, parent involvement is, engagement is a very important part and so the team is working on some other things to get parents engaged, not just in PBIS as such, but in the school as a whole. Okay? Anything else? Okay.
Hi, I'm Allison Schnorr. I'm the internal coach for the Hales Corners Elementary Tier One Team. And we made a decision as an entire staff in 2013 to start this PBIS journey. It was, you know, something that we didn't pursue until the whole staff thought we were ready for it. And so we chose to do this because we knew how important it was to develop positive and consistent expectations, not only for all of the students, but for the staff as well. So during our first year of implementation, we established, we worked together really hard as a tier one team that summer and put in many hours over the summer to establish our school-wide expectations, our acknowledgement system, the behavior reporting system, and then we also started our data collection that year. And our staff embraced PBIS, which is the whole reason we were so successful with it because their commitment to it of the implementation right off the bat. During our second year was our year that we really focused on the data collection piece and looking at our behavior, our office discipline referral to, and our staff and team data to really inform our action plan on where we were going next. For the last, previous years, the 14-15 school year and this 15, 14-15 and 15-16 school years, we received School of Merit recognition, which at that point was an application process that we submitted our data to the RTI network and they looked at it and decided what level of recognition we received. The recognition process is new this year and so school teams don't need to apply for recognition. Everything is system-based and data-based and they review our data at the end of the year through the Swiss program that we were using and then also our PBIS surveys to determine what recognition status we were at. And this year, we were really pleased to receive that silver level recognition because this is our first year implementing tier two. So we weren't quite sure where we were going to fall within that. So we were really, really proud of that. So I just wanted to thank you guys and thank the team for all their hard work.
I just add one more thing. We, I'm going to tell you about this. We went to the zoo the last week of school, so Monday, June 5th, and we all wore, staff all wore their shirts. And I had a couple of people throughout the zoo, various volunteers, things, come up to me and say, "Those kids with the, the grownups with those blue shirts, those are the nicest kids." And I was like, "And they're so well, you know, very respectful, very kind." I was like, "Yes." So it could have backfired on us having all having the same T-shirts, but we thought, you know, it really didn't. We wanted also parents to recognize if they didn't recognize or find their teacher if they were having an issue, so they could find somebody in the beautiful aqua shirts. So I think we do have very respectful, kind students and they're learning that, you know, hopefully through our example and each other's examples, students' examples. So thanks for letting us brag.
Thank you. Do we have one more person with notes I see here that didn't speak?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, that was. You're the backup.
Backup singers.
Well, and I didn't ask if you guys had any questions for me as the internal coach at all, so if anybody does.
No, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, item four B is building news, so Laurie sent you.
Okay, I'll go fast. It's like a little time. So last week was extremely busy. I mentioned the zoo trip already on Monday. On Tuesday, we had Student Recognition Assembly, which was awesome. Nothing like seeing 640 kids in our big gym and actually every year we do a kickoff for PBIS and just, just the whole beginning of the year kickoff and we always have a song. So we've been singing that song through the year every time we'd have an assembly and just to see them all dancing and singing that, you know, "We're All In" song, it was awesome. And then, oh gosh, I'll just end with where we ended. The Milwaukee Flyers came on Friday. We had great weather. It was quite an amazing, you know, acrobatic group that comes. They're high energy. It was, the funny part about it though is that our kids are so used to assemblies where you're sitting and really paying attention and listening, like they almost had, we needed to do a little tutorial on how you actually can clap and get into the groove of that assembly. So that was really a lot of fun. And everyone on prior was on the playground. Our PTO supplied chalk and everybody was just out doing chalk paintings and just having a really great way to come together as a school community before they head off to the summer. So it was a really awesome week together last week. And now it's quiet.
Did you see the crayons? People ever shook?
No, they didn't. Mrs. Glick was pretty, you know, a little sad about that one, but they did send the big box of the crayons and whatnot. No, she was just hoping that she was going to see Dandy, but no, Dandy didn't show up, so.
And then between the staff and the PTO for putting together the reward.
Oh, gosh, yeah, that was the Friday prior. So we had the Rewards Carnival, which is based off of, kids can use their last falcon feathers and, you know, have raffles and face painting and all that kind of fun stuff. So, and then we did whatever was left on your way down the hall. You dropped them into a bin and we did additional raffles too. So it was, it was all good. It was, it's been very action-packed. I almost forgot the week before because the last week was so busy, so.
All right, thank you. Chris for Edgerton. Support the name tag right away?
I know, two weeks and two board meetings in a row in jeans. I apologize. Was at a staff, at a staff party literally right after today and then right to here. So we had a busy last week as well, not in my principal suit. We had a highly successful field day. About 475 of our kids participated. It was wonderful. Our PTO helped put that field day on. They always do a really nice job, as well as Mr. LaRosa, our PE teacher. We also had a recognition celebration at Edgerton. We had 475 of our kids plus about 50 of our staff celebrate our year. I was really proud of our kids and our staff this year. We made strong gains in both reading and mathematics across the board, high growth, high achievement, so we were thrilled about that. We have a reading event that's coming up tomorrow, excuse me, coming up Wednesday. It's called Feast on Books. It's going to be from 5:30 to 7:00 in Edgerton. The Hales Corners Library also comes over and kind of partnerships with us. We're going to supply a picnic for the families and then they can check out books at our Edgerton Library. And we've done this, we did this last year, it was really successful. We already have 100 families signed up for Wednesday, which is great, the very week, next week after the kids are out of school. We're really trying to promote summer reading. We have learned that if kids read and read regularly over the summer, they not only prevent what we call the summer slide, but they actually can gain reading levels. So we always track that data from summer till fall to see what happens with our kiddos. So we do a test in May and then another test in September to see where kids are at. And when they get back, they get a treat with the principal if they participated. And we also have some nice gifts from Barnes and Nobles and other things like that to keep the kids motivated with some, just some things that they might enjoy. So we'll have three events this summer. This is our first one and they're all going to be listed on our website and we're going to blast it out on email as well. So that's it.
Great, thank you. And Lynn for the middle school.
So we closed out the year being very busy as well, last couple of weeks. Flurry of traditional field trips that have taken place for years and years and years. We've got a movie that always tries to get tied into the social studies curricular theme in sixth grade, Six Flags for the eighth graders once the classes are done and closed out of session. So that was a whirlwind of fun. Last week, the seventh graders, seventh grade science classes were outside using their solar cookers. They were charged with designing, as they have every year, they design their solar cookers and they have to cook actual food based on how they've constructed their, whatever materials, cardboard and aluminum foil, and they have to try and figure out how that's going to cook their hot dogs or whatnot. And the big news this year, big news flash in learning curve this year was that we had plenty of sun and nobody really accounted for the amount of wind. And why does that? It was still the sun and now we have the wind and why is that? So that was actually really interesting learning for them. And it's always a great sight to just see solar cookers all over the soccer field and all these aluminum foil contraptions. I'm sure people driving by are curious. We had our eighth grade completion ceremony and dance on Friday night. So we had the ceremony with certificate handouts and in the high school gym and then moved back across the street for the dance. And we have a fantastic group of parents that took on the whole charge of the dance and did all the planning and decorations and food and really put out a nice little shindig for the eighth grade students. So that was how we closed out the year with students. Today was moving day at the middle school because the majority of teachers are moving classrooms as we reconfigure into those three people teacher teams we've been talking about. So some teachers have been in the same room for a really long time, so today was sort of a really big deal. And we just got carts and extra dumpsters and everybody pitched in and just hauled stuff all around the building. So at first people were a little grumpy early in the morning, but it started to be fun as we all kind of pulled together. And I want to point out to Chris that I had a staff party and moving day and I still dressed up for the board meeting.
How? That was also already noted. I need her, why not? Graduation was wonderfully warm. Jonathan, I know, really enjoyed his time there. Quinn possibly stole the show with his speech. Very nice. He did. I did not see that coming at all. It was really good.
And you can watch it again on YouTube.
Oh, I did.
The whole ceremony was recorded this year.
All right, then.
For the first time, yeah.
And then this past weekend, we had one of our high schoolers working their ego project in the Woodnell Forest. So if you see a bunch of brush over there, it's because the greenfield dump will only take one load per day, per person's tag. So we ran out of things for that, so. It'll all get cleared out eventually, but we planted some nice new trees and got rid of a lot of invasive species and I know Laura Soletti was there marking all the trees and really helping out with that, so.
And hopefully a successful exam week for all of the underclassmen also was last weekend, slightly different exam schedule than what was, what's been in the past, but the exams didn't start till Wednesday. It went Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So the kids will hopefully studying up until the very last minute and the grades will be posted tomorrow by 3:30 with the rest of the district's information in Canvas and so good luck to all the kids.
Great.
Eighty days until the first day of school. So you did well.
All right, thank you. So on to item five is reports. No committee reports for item 5A today. So Dr. Olson with the superintendent report.
Wait.
Go ahead.
Legislative, did you have one for that?
Oh.
Well, there's not a, okay. Tomorrow is SWSA.
I'm going to do my best.
Okay, yeah. And we have a speaker tomorrow, so maybe that. But just the legislative piece, I think it's important that we just talk about the legislative piece because I think we're right in right now, a time where stuff could happen. I think I was sharing with the board, stuff that comes and right now we're sort of waiting. I think it literally could be, as you know, at this time of the year, the governor still says he's committed to have a budget passed by the end of June, but they've not yet talked about K-12 education. You saw that the assembly came out with a counterproposal to the governor's proposal in terms of that and Mike, if you want to share what that means in terms of it, but obviously I think that back and forth, you know, shortly after that, I think you saw the Senate's reaction to that. They, like within 10 minutes, the speaker rejected it. So I think that that sort of shows that there's not a lot of collaboration or at least the spirit of at this point. And so I think it's, it's interesting. I think in both of the second year of their proposals, I think it's something that districts could. I think obviously, as you know, there's competing causes for the budget, whether it's transportation or Medicaid or whatever else might take that priority. I think there was some news late last week in which the governor was recorded saying that he may be willing to come down a little bit. That was not his initial thoughts on what he said, that he was willing to negotiate. We are dealing with politics after all and so we'll see how that ends up and how quickly it is. I think that any legislative alerts that we've been getting, I've been sharing because this is usually the time in which stuff happens late into the night and a lot of action happens very quickly. So right now, we're just sort of in this holding pattern as they figure out, but we've not heard any timing on when the next conversations, they've not held any, we're putting any dates out there right now in terms of what that all means. So we're there, but yet, as we said, on June 12th, to have a complete state budget done by June 30th, I don't know. That's a, that's not a lot of workdays between now and then, so we'll see. Just wanted to share that because it's critical.
Thank you. Okay. Now the superintendent report.
Sure. So last one of the year in terms of our district goals that we have. So the first one has to do with our personalizing learning and I think as we've been talking about each month, I think really right now, both of our elementary schools have done some restructuring of some of the teachers or teams in terms of that to build some capacity, some movement a little bit in terms of that. I know they're looking at spaces. It's a proposal later on in terms of what that looks like. And so both time today and tomorrow will be spent. We have a speaker coming in tomorrow, John Spencer. Some of our staff heard him at a conference in Milwaukee in November. Very well-known speaker is coming in and spending the day in our district tomorrow and we'll have breakout time with each of our grade levels and so teachers can ask questions of him. So that's what our elementary teachers have been working on in terms of personalizing learning. Our middle school, I think as you heard Lynn talk about, there's a lot of both physical space and teams of three teachers creating that. And John Spencer himself was a former middle school educator and so has a lot of his background in that about how do you teach at that middle level and what this looks like. I think our teachers just have a lot of questions because it's very different from what they're familiar with. And so hopefully they will come with lots of questions. He has about two and a half hours with just the middle school staff tomorrow afternoon. We did that very intentionally because they're probably seeing the most change of all of the groups. And then our high school teachers who are teaching the seminar courses next year are just finishing up that micro credential course and I've been, Jackie and Amy took the first section. I've been teaching the last several weeks in that course about how to create a course between two different content areas, how to create the experiences and what that looks like. So that's where our high school teachers are in terms of that process and what that looks like and how will they assess learning? Because it will look a little bit different than many of them do in their traditional courses because it's very hands-on and project-based, which some of them do not have that type of course. So taking a look at that and I think it's been, all of them have really appreciated that time to really just talk about learning and what their goals are, what they want the students to have at the end of the course and walk away with. And I appreciate those conversations because it really is about the bigger concepts of things, takeaways, instead of just the memorizing detail stuff. And I think that that's really important. The next goal has to do with the reading and math and I think you heard as Chris shared that, you know, some of our preliminary formative assessment data's come back and so we can see those gains. We haven't gotten our standardized test reports. Those don't come back until later in the summer and as we did before, we will share those out. We do have some summer training based on EduClimber, both sending principals and our team to the conference, but then also extending that out and doing some train the trainer type of events here over the summer, getting some of our other key people trained onsite. So that will help us decide in terms of growth data, how do we measure that and get it more accessible to teachers right at the beginning of the school year. Goal three had to do with a communication plan. You should have all received your viewpoint since the last time that we met. That was mailed to residents. During the month of May and our first week in June, we had created the Connect, which was our family e-newsletter that was sent out. And we did on Friday a survey to parents about the Connect itself. Was it timely? When would they like it in terms of that? And we had 122 responses at noon today and all but seven of those, I think one of the option was, "It's perfect, leave it as it is," or seven, "Here are some suggestions." And so every, all but seven said it was perfect the way that it was. So very positive feedback on that. I'll share that out. It's not closed yet, it's only been open since Friday, so, but I just wanted to give you some preliminary results on that. The school perception survey that will be used on June 15th also included a whole section on district communication and that had 629 respondents to our survey there. So there's a lot more comments and feedback to go through in terms of that. And I think that we'll talk more about that on the 15th and then here on the 26th in terms of what that communication. There was lots of comments about the website itself, which I think we've all determined up until this point could use an overhaul in terms of organization and updating that. And then we are continuing today. We spent some time looking at the website. Redo the priorities, organization of it to make sure that what's at it, you know, when you get to the district page and then when you get to a school building page, what would be important and parents and trying to take it from that lens. So we're doing some preliminary work. And then going to bring in some focus groups of community people or parents and say, "If you were to visit our website, what, you know, what are some things that are either lacking or that to try to get a little bit more detailed information?" Goal number four relates to the financial plan and I'm not going to say other much than, Mike has a preliminary budget report later on and I think you've been hearing what that looks like, so I think we'll save that for that part of the agenda. In terms of integrating all of our operational systems, last year, for those of you who have students in the district, know that the process of student registration was done hard copy paper and we are moving to an online system through Infinite Campus and so that'll become available shortly after July 1st. What that will do is save us in time though. So remember, as soon as parents filled out that hard copy, district staff had to then re-enter every single, all the 2,000, you know, plus different applications that were in there. I think one of the biggest hangups for us is getting the health plan information from students. We were not ready to go with all the health information for students when school started. That becomes a problem if you're going on field trips or need to know or manage health plans. And so by having that done online and the expediency of getting that data updated will be a huge time saver. Also, parents don't have to physically come into the district office if they don't need to. We will still have people available during the summer with a couple of computers out there in kiosks, but that won't be a requirement for those who are very comfortable and have minimal changes that they need to make.
So it'll be fully operational for a new year.
Kathy's working with that. She's overseeing that with Kate and then Todd Stacy's been. So we had an Infinite Campus person come in two days.
Yeah, she stayed for a day and she, there was four of us in the meeting and she walked us through how to set up online registration and how to customize it for our district. And then the following day, the four of us locked ourselves in the boardroom here and started writing the code for all the different specialized pages that we need to add. And we're going to meet again Thursday morning to kind of walk through it and see what it looks like. And I think that we definitely will have it up and running by July 1st.
Is there an additional cost in our expansion of the use of Infinite Campus in this way? And in getting this turned on? Is there an additional cost in our expansion of the use of Infinite Campus in this way and in getting this training?
The training was not, because we had, whatever the contract was that comes with Infinite Campus, we are given X number of days of training provided. And Eric shared with us at that time that we hadn't used our days of training yet. So, we were able to customize it, which is a lot more customized than sending someone off to a conference because we can target them. So, the training, I can answer you. I don't know if it was a separate module or not, or if it's just, that was part of it, or just a module we had never used before. I don't know that off the top of my head.
So, I'll have to find that out, if it costs us more money or not, I think we should know.
Yeah, I can look that up. I haven't seen an invoice yet, so it could just simply be the training and that the module hasn't been used before. So, I can verify that.
But then, you'd want to offset that with staff costs.
Staff costs.
For how many ever weeks that it would take to enter that. And I think it'll be a huge upgrade for the parents. I mean, that used to just be ridiculous, having to come register.
It only saves, I'm sorry, Nancy.
I'm done.
Okay, it only saves staff costs if we were paying staff extra to come in and do that?
We were.
Okay.
Our health, our health people, and just the time on task away from the other stuff. And I would just say, for me, the biggest, and I think principals, the biggest concern is that health plan information was not in there September 1, when students were in the building. That's a big concern for all of us. That's a risk that we just can't put out there, especially when we have some students with some significant needs, so, yep. And then, let's see. Last piece just has to do with our customer service protocols. And I think Karen Gonzalez, our HR manager, has continued to meet with our secretarial staff. They are finalizing an operating procedures manual for that group, and we plan on taking that forward with our custodial staff, our food service staff next year in terms of having some more, what we call frontline employees and customer service, having some standard responses and just, like, who do I go to for? Sometimes, I think, within the district, that wasn't always clear. If someone gets a question, who do I transfer this call to? Or who is the person who can answer this for the person? And we want to make sure that whoever it is, a parent or outside person calling in, that we aren't playing, transferring them like three times before they get the right person that can answer them. So, we'll continue that on. But our secretarial staff has been meeting monthly to continue that work, and I think they found that to be very valuable this year, so.
Can we go back to policy committee? I have a question.
Go ahead.
Where are we at with Neola?
Yep, I spent day number six today with them, so, just finishing up with that. So, went through the last pieces of it, and so, I'm just getting ready to, I was gonna chat with you tonight about that as far as the very first meeting that we had with them back in March, which was the bylaws, the zeros series, which the Whitnall policies did not have that. And the nine thousands are done to look at. So, we just got those through from that preliminary work. So, we have notes in terms of comparing them and all of that. So, the question becomes if that, if the initial review of that wants to happen through policy committee, if there's an initial, like, I mean, it's gonna take a while for people to process that, you know, coming, to do their homework, if you will, prior to coming to that. But if it, then it's at a policy committee, which all board members are able to attend because it will be a work session to some extent. Some of the series of policies have more change than others. I would say the bylaws section, because this board did not have a lot of that, will probably be, and that has to do with board governance and structure, it will probably be the most, one that has probably the most discussion at the board. Some of the other ones are all governed by a lot of state statutes and law and really are non-discussion. And remember, this is the policy level, not the administrative guideline level. And so, some of that stuff gets flushed through there. So, that's, we just finished up with those today, the eight thousand series, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, then we'll move on to five C, administrative reports, monthly financials with Mike.
Just a quick note, come the end of June, we run payrolls for the remainder of the year for our teachers. And so, that gives us a real good guideline, once that is completed, of how really the fiscal year is going to shape up, along with, you know, everyone trying to race and get their invoices out before June 30th and get that into other districts' hands. So, I'm really gonna try to do is, in July, you'll probably see May in the discussion, in committee of the whole, in early July. But then, hopefully, at the end of July, get out the June 30th so that you can essentially see how the budget ended up for the sixteen, seventeen school year. And if there is any sort of leeway as far as surplus goes, we can talk about what that could mean at the end of July, not that they're, you know, how that'll all shake out. So, that gives us at least some time at the July meeting to discuss if there's any possibility of, you know, using Fund 46 or putting dollars there, or doing different things. So, that's where we are currently. Not a lot of specific notes on this piece unless you have any questions.
Okay, on to.
I have a question. I thought it was facilities and strategic planning reports from the superintendent. Did I miss those? Aren't there any today? And I just, my question was.
Yeah, sure.
Strategic planning, or was this our year, when is our year-end report gonna come? And then, when are we gonna set goals for next year was one of my questions.
So, year-end for?
Year, the annual. These are annual goals?
Mm-hmm.
And we've been getting a monthly review. Is there like a year-end report?
My understanding says part of my evaluation tonight?
And then?
Because those were adopted as my goals, and so.
Or, what am I, the district goals? And then?
Remember, for this year.
How are we setting the goals for next year was the question.
Yeah, so, these are, were her goals for this year. In part, if you looked at the email that I sent out at the beginning of July, when we have that close session meeting, we're gonna start working on those.
On the district goals?
Well, we're gonna start working with Dr. Olson's goals, and then those will build out into the district.
So, it's part, will it not be then part of the strategic planning process?
Yep, so, Thursdays are strategic planning, right? It's the goal, what do we want for that? Those will develop the district goals? And so, then, in early July, when we're setting my goals, my goals should come from the district goals?
So, there's two sets of goals then this year? Because we still need to approve the district goals.
For next year?
For next year?
Yes.
Right, okay. So, okay, those will be two goals or whatever. We'll figure that out then.
Yeah, so, this year, I think, based on the timing of where we were, we did not have strategic planning this last year. So, we decided that the district priorities became mine. So, what should happen is that the district, from some type of strategic planning and analysis of data, which we'll see on Thursday, like, what the community has decided is their priorities, the board will then sort of create that vision, and from there specifically, decide what that, what that means for my goals.
We also, we have to approve the district goals then, after Thursday's session. And that'll be coming to a board.
That'll be in July.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, anybody else? Questions? Okay, on to item six, discussion. Six A is early entrance policy. Dr. Olson?
So, this is the first reading. This was taken to Policy Committee on May 8th. We discussed this. While the bulk of this really lies in administrative guidelines, there is a sentence on the policy itself that talks about, because it said there were no exceptions for 4K. And so, we talked about this at Policy Committee that night. And so, the policy itself, and I think Kathy has it up there for anybody who's in the audience and does not have a copy of it, talks about that there, there would be, that the early entrance, that there would be made exceptions. And then, if you read the administrative guidelines, you can see what they are. While the board doesn't approve administrative guidelines, it was critical that you saw what was being put together because it's the details that follow up by offering an exception. And I think talking with, this is a conversation that both of the elementary principals. We've talked with Jackie in terms of, you know, her new role, of how we see this happening. But I think if the philosophy is we're really trying to personalize learning, to come out and say, "We have zero exceptions, we could never, ever make an exception," is a pretty strong statement. I think, as stated in here, we all agree that it is extremely rare that this might happen. But we'd want to make sure, you know, for example, if a child's birthday was on September 2nd, are we absolutely that sure that the difference between September 1 and September 2, like, we're absolutely that clear that one day would eliminate a child? So, this allows for that, and it delineates and just cleans up the language in the administrative guidelines in terms of policy. We didn't necessarily have quite that, that step. So, should the policy approve, then we would develop a form so parents could access that form. It talks about assessments with all of our pupil services personnel who do that. We have speech-language folks. We have occupational therapists, anybody who needs. We have our early childhood specialists who could actually, who are experts in that, to be able to make a decision, talk with the parents in terms of school readiness. So, basically, what this does is provides an exception when there is that exceptional child who might need that versus there's no exception at all to that.
So, while we've tailored a policy to one individual, where does it stand for a gentleman that came up and spoke?
Right, so, you can see in the guidelines that we have dates specifically, and we did that intentionally. So, I think this year, should the board pass it, based on the timeline where that is, if we wanted to look at saying, "This year, because the board passed that policy different than where it will be next year in terms of when the dates are," the board could at that time, because we're not taking action tonight, say, "We're passing the policy as it is here for the future, but this year, due to the timing of the board passing this, we're going to have this deadline on this date." So, I think, and we put August 1st because, you know, at children that age, a month or two or three months is a very huge thing in child development. And so, you know, you don't want to have a February timeline when the child wouldn't be starting school till September. That's a huge gap in a, in a four-year-old's world in terms of child development. So, we tried to look at timelines that would allow us to plan, but at the same time, be responsive to readiness and be as close to accurate as we could. So, I would think the exception we would want to, at the same time, allow for what that policy is. I know that there are, you know, there's not just, there's one other situation this year that we'd want to look at.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
It's just poorly written, if you ask me. Except for, except as provided, could this be rewritten so that it makes some sense?
The policy?
Yeah.
So, so.
And I know the new one's coming.
It is, I know. And I was trying to debate you. I take the Neola new one that is written much more concisely compared to what was, which existed in the district before. Because you can see the guidelines pretty much rewrote all of it because it was really not easy to follow. And I, and that was my question because the Neola one is a little bit more concise. And this, I just took the current board one and just added that we will have an exception. But I can look at that if you want, if the board wants to take a look at the new one for early entrance.
Because this makes no sense.
That was my comment as well. I had to read it over like, I don't know, four times to figure out what it was saying.
Right.
And I, I think that you could make a really minor change to it and to say something like, "A child who becomes four years after September 1 of the year and seeks admission to four-year-old kindergarten may not be enrolled in four-year-old kindergarten." I think if you just make those couple little wording changes, it makes much more sense. Because, yeah, I agree with who handles.
Yeah.
The exception is unless a recommendation from the superintendent. That's the exception, correct? If you recommend, the policy.
Right, as you look at the guidelines, and it tells you where that, because there's a form and a whole thing, absolutely.
Doesn't here.
Right.
And here, you could say, "Except, this is the general rule, but superintendent might allow or recommend."
I don't disagree.
Yeah, you could reword that. I appreciate that. I mean, I totally agree with what you're trying to do so that we can take care of kids personally.
I'm sorry. Did you look at the Neola thing and how, did you get some of this wording from the Neola thing?
Their wording tends to be a lot more concise and direct in terms of that. And so, you know, I get it where it was written originally for, that there weren't any exceptions for 4K, and then there were for this. So, what I can do is I can share out, as soon as tomorrow, actually, if you want to be able to, you don't have to wait till the next board packet because this is, you know, slated for, you know, vote at the end of June, if you will. So, I can send that out and then, so we're not waiting till last minute. Because if you want to look at the two and say, "Yes, we like this," then, or just ask for some feedback. Because then, I can move that one to the June 26th meeting to look at that. But I think it's more concise would be my opinion on it.
If I can just say something, I appreciate the attempt at redlining. And this goes for the handbooks that we're gonna look at later in this meeting. I appreciate the attempt at redlining, but the way it used to be done with Word or whatever and without all the formatting notes in the sign is much easier for, at least me, to see what's been changed. Because there'll be a note on the sign saying, "This word was deleted, where was it deleted from?" Because there was a lot of stuff happening in one line there. And I don't care about that there an indent was changed or anything. So, I'm just telling you, the way it was done was much easier for me to compare and contrast and see, see what's changed.
Yep, so, that was done in Microsoft Word? I, there was a lot of changing. So, what happens, if you saw the little arrows on there, when there's that much changing, it just condenses it all down, so the boxes weren't expanded.
I, I think I'm talking about a more simple way of, you know, you line out this word, and then you write in the other word, and you.
So, like manually do it, or the?
Kathy?
I can speak to how it was in the past, and it was actually very cumbersome. It was not really like a redline, truly what a redline policy would, like, this is actually redlined.
This is true redlining, yeah.
How they were doing it in the past is they would like strike out, do a strikeout on what they were doing, and then add the new language in red. But then, when it got approved, it meant that you had to go in and you had to take out those strikeouts and delete that, and you had to change the color. So, it was a very manual, cumbersome process.
I understand, and I agree. My statement is still that I found that way easier for me to compare and contrast what was actually being changed than this method. I understand that this method is easier to do, but to interpret, for me anyway, maybe I've got a simple brain, but to interpret for me anyway, I find the old method much easier to just see a compare and contrast. And that's what I prefer, for what it's worth.
Okay. Any other questions about the policy itself? Okay, moving on to six B, Core Four charter renewal. Lori?
I can speak to redlining because this was the manual redlining. It's not easy, and because when, when we go back, it'll, it'll be a challenge. But so, we, we received, or I received communication from Latoya Holliday, who is DPI consultant for charter schools here in Wisconsin. And she explained that recent federal and state charter law changed, and one component of our contract, of our agreement, needed to be, be looked at, and it had to do with term, the term length. So, when the original charter was written, there was a five-year term length. And then, when it was reauthorized by the board, after that five years was finished, at that point, I had already now come on as the administrator for Core Four, and we were given the opportunity to leave it as an open-ended term. But now, federal law has changed back, and they want term, an actual date. So, as I was, you know, speaking with Latoya, I said, "You know, since I'm going to the board, are there other areas of the charter that, of the contract that are gonna be subsequently given me an email in another month or two about?" And she said, "Let me do a review." So, that's why it's a more comprehensive, some comprehensive changes, so that we wouldn't have to do this back and forth. So, the board packet gave you a listing of where all those changes were and how they would be changed. Still awaiting some input regarding public school alternatives. DPI, it has some wording that they're gonna be sharing with me, and I, to date, have not received that from Latoya Holliday yet. So, hopefully, that will happen really soon so that I can give you that piece of information as well. But that wasn't an area under concern, so. Any questions?
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Lori. Six C is the preliminary budget with Mike.
So, as we get used to each other and kind of what you need to see and what I need to do for you during this budget process over the next, still four months till October. What this, what this budget currently does is, and I'll kind of just tell you what I kind of focus on at this time of year. Really, what the budget focuses on is the ability, come July 1, that we have some authority to spend and meet obligations all the way until the budget is passed officially, you know, in October. And so, we need a preliminary budget passed to be able to say, "Yes, you can still pay bills starting July 1, it's okay." And so, what you have in front of you is, one, is really the DPI format for what the board detail needs to be all the way down and for all the funds. And so, while that can just be, you know, kind of, boy, where are these differences from one year to the next of what we see in each of the funds, really what I focus on, and I can talk about some of those pieces if you wish, really what I focus on is the handout as well, which is really one of the major variables that we're looking at right now to provide a structure and a framework here in June that we can all have common discussion on come, really, August, September, and October. So, the brief handout. So the brief handout of the budget variables, at least when I start saying, here's why revenues went up or down, and here are the variables that we have, the preliminary budget, you can at least see, well, Mike budgeted for 2090 and we got 2,100 students or we got 2080. We know kind of what we're looking at. Property values went up or down by this much and here's what we had the budget this time. If anything, what the Assembly did for us with their version of the, of what they would like to see the state budget be, it appears that they did give us, I would hope at least, a floor in what we can expect as far as a revenue per pupil. The Assembly came across with 150 in the first year of the budget. We know that the government proposed 200. In this preliminary budget, we are budgeting 150. So we'll cross our fingers over the next, hopefully only three weeks, to see kind of where that all shakes out. But we did go, what I, it's really hard to not put in 200. So I kept the 150 in there and feel confident that that is the floor with what the Assembly came out with. Obviously a big variable also in that handout sheet is the open enrollment in versus open enrollment out. We're still kind of compiling those numbers and sometime toward late summer we'll have a really clear indication of what I call the gap between our in and our out so we know what our net revenues are for the upcoming fiscal year. As far as the detail that you see, unless, you know, there's some other strategy involved that we want to employ, you look for a balanced budget to balance out the revenues and the expenditures. And through discussions, we can talk about whether we want to show something else, a surplus or a deficit, if it makes sense to do. As far as specific line items go, and if we wanted to note any major differences, you know, right now, for example, if you look at line 340 for the revenues payment for services, we're showing an open enrollment increase there as far as the gap goes between open enrollment in and out. So there's some additional revenues in those pieces. Moving of revenues from line 610 to line 690 so that they're more accurately reflected towards what our accounting should be. Those sorts of things are happening on the revenue side. As far as the expenditure side goes, really what we do from a budgeting standpoint is we've got a whole big, right, Excel spreadsheet. We ask for the building budgets to come in. We ask for, when Eric was here, he brought his tech budget in. When Matt was here, brought in the buildings and grounds budget. We just compile those all together and see how they fit in with the revenue side and then begin to make changes according to what we see. And again, I'm a conservative revenue side. I try to budget conservatively on the revenue side at this point in time and conservatively on the expenditure side as well. So that, with the changes that occur, we know where we can possibly take either increased revenues or decrease expenditures if appropriate. Again, this is a, this budget is wrong. There are variables that'll come in that will change. Staff are being hired, staff are kind of getting going. As far as even tonight, we're voting on, you know, construction projects and things like that. Those things all have to be fleshed out through the course of the budget process. But very early on, this gives us a framework, as I said, to discuss throughout the summer and into the fall.
So if we do just get to 150 per student, we're good?
What are, we're good.
We don't have to kind of direct our finance or anything like that?
We have.
Would you start there?
Yeah, yeah, I would say you could, you could cut in worse places. So I would say at 150 per student, what we're doing right now is we are dipping into Fund 41 for some of the construction project that we're voting on tonight. If we get above 175, I feel like we'd handle that all in Fund 10. If we get the $200, now we're looking at areas in which, boy, we would like to do more of this or more of that. Can we do that with the new revenue that's been brought forward? So that's where we stand at 150.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, because if you, where we got 20, 200 students, basically at 50 bucks is 110,000. So that's what we could pull with if we got to the max of the 200.
Correct, we're looking at somewhere up in that 100 to 125 range. At $200, which we would be great.
As in number 150, we're not looking at cutting anything?
No, no. Like I said, we would be looking at, you know, if the construction project would go through for the middle school, we'd be looking to take that out of Fund 41. That's, we're looking at alternative sources and alternative funds.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions about their preliminary budget?
And then just to note, obviously in August, we'll bring forward another one. That will be the published budget that will go out in the newspaper in a much condensed version than this. It was everything kind of rolled up. That's what I'll present on at the annual, at the budget hearing. And then any changes in October will be the final budget or the original budget for 1718.
All right, thank you. So on to 6D, second performance contract with Train.
Oh yeah, I just keep, should I just, I should just keep talking all the way through. It's my show, thanks, thanks guys for showing up. So the second performance contract, this is the, at the, at the May 1 finance facilities. This was the additional work that we're looking to do in 1718. It is the domestic hot water heaters and the lighting that would bring our total energy efficiency projects to 600,000 for the 1718 school year. What we're voting on later in the evening is 325 of that, which is already a district obligation. We're moving that to 1718. And this is an additional 275 for the domestic hot waters and the, and the lighting. Really with the domestic hot water, as we discussed at the finance, it's more of a deferred cost, though there is some payback over a very long period of time, but it's more of the deferred cost that we're picking up more than anything else with this project. Okay, I'll stop there and just won't roll to the resolution yet. Are there questions on what that is, what's being brought forward in the scope?
So I wondered about the, so this is the second performance contract, which means it includes the Third Amendment. Is that, am I understanding that?
Correct.
So I gotta find Mike's question on this. If somebody else has something, go ahead.
Go ahead, Quinn. Oh, I thought you raised your hand, sir. Anybody else have any questions on this?
So a total of, as John alluded to, a total of three amendments. Negative 325, plus 325, and then the 275. While John is looking for his question, the resolution then, okay, go ahead, John.
That's right. Finish with.
Well, I was gonna move, I was gonna just move on.
So on the, on these, this kind of table that you've given us on, that identifies like the rooms and what's going to be done? And then the third column, is that the number of items for that particular line item?
For that particular piece, I gotta pull up the whole thing though, but yeah.
For example, on the Amendment 3, let's make it simple. So Amendment 3, page 8.
I gotta pull that up, John, sorry. Oh, you got the hard copy right in front of you.
Gee, isn't paper awesome?
Yeah. It does work. All right, page 8. And Todd, be on your toes.
So this is the one where at the top of the page it says elevator, elevator 1, elevator 2.
Sure.
Okay. So we're talking about like elevator 1LT12, 1x4, so I assume that's a four-foot surface strip. Is that two of those or something like that? And the description is one lamp, 15 watt LED tube and light. So I'm only getting into this detail so I can, for the foundation of the question.
Okay.
So this is all for the high school, right?
This is all, the lighting is all for the high school, correct?
How many elevators do we have at the high school? Do we have more than two? Because I only, I only thought there were two. There's two. So I see three elevators listed there. So that's kind of what I'm getting at is there may be some duplicate stuff in here. And it's all itemized out, it's going to cost us money, but yet there may be duplicates. So what my concern is, because then if you go down to, or if you go up to page, for the beginning of Phase 1, it lists some classroom numbers and that there's some lights being done there, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so then if you scoop down to Phase 2, which is page 9 of 9, so last page, it talks about, I believe, again, if those are units, it's 170 units. I'm not sure of the number of classrooms that we have. But there's, it lists more light fixtures that are kind of the same kind of light fixtures as some of the, some of the ones up above. So I just wonder, just much like the elevator line items, I just wonder if there's any duplicate classrooms that we're being charged to do two or three times. You see what I mean or at least why?
So what can happen throughout this process is much like what happened throughout the process for the last one, which is where we can approve a scope, but that we can continue to narrow down that scope with Train and continue to identify exactly what is happening at each of these line items before we sign anything with, with. So very much in the same way that this project last year was approved in October at that meeting, we ended up not signing a contract until early January as we continue to look at what the scope is.
So this is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, go, yep.
So this is up for approval tonight, but we don't necessarily sign it tonight or tomorrow?
No, this isn't.
This one, this one isn't up for approval.
Not including Phase 2?
No, none of, none of this is up for approval for two more weeks. What we are approving tonight is what was essentially approved last October, but we're shifting into the 1718 school year. So that's why I wanted to make sure we break this Amendment 3 out so that we know we've got even two more weeks to answer these sorts of questions.
So we're approving Amendments 1 and 2, right?
Correct.
Okay, Amendments 1 and 2 do include Phase 1.
So what?
So Phase 1 is where we've got the elevator repeats on there for like three elevators somehow. So it is relevant?
It is, it's extremely relevant.
So this is why, so this is why I'm asking, this part of, part of this nine-page document, all but the last table of it, if I'm not mistaken, because that is a side-by-side comparison of the previous nine-page document and this one, the only difference that I could see is Phase 2 is added on for this one.
Is the classrooms.
Basically what we're approving is everything up to Phase 2 and that approval is for tonight, right?
No, no, Phase 2 is in two weeks.
I'm not talking about Phase 2, I'm talking everything prior to Phase 2.
Correct, is up for approval tonight.
So part of, part of this final document that includes Phase 2, everything up till Phase 2 is included for tonight's approval.
Yes.
And I see some repeats. And that's why I ask now, are you going to, if we approve this tonight, does it get signed tomorrow or what? Because again, I think there needs to be a little bit of vetting on, on looking for repeats.
So, so what I can do with Train tomorrow is to ensure that, one, they're trying to make sure that they're covering everything, of course. But what I can ensure is them is, hey, what is part of what we're already doing in Phase 1 and what is getting added on, which I believe is Phase 2?
That's all I saw.
Yep, and so what we can even have them do is just take these areas off. I don't think we are, well, now I say I think, that's an assumption. So let me go back to Train as far as what Phase 3 covers versus what, excuse me, Phase 2 versus Amendment 3 covers versus what we're proving tonight.
Because I believe Amendment 3 is just Phase 2.
Correct, because they've also left on here, which we have discussed with Train, they also left on here some of the HVAC work as well. And they said, oh, we're leaving that on because there will be some HVAC work that we do need to finish up. So we need to verify exactly what is Phase 2 versus Phase 1 and being covered with the 325. I'm partially talking to Todd too, just to verify. And maybe make this document, this scope document cleaner for all of us to see the differences between Amendments 1 and 2 versus Amendment 3.
I would ask to also make sure that the stuff included up through Amendment 2, that there isn't, there aren't duplicate items that we're paying for something twice, like anchor, the modification of the lighting for three elevators when we only have two in the building.
Agree.
So how would that affect tonight's vote?
It wouldn't because the three, and this is the perfect reason why we separated this out is that the 325 that we're approving tonight is already obligated to us. What we're going to verify before we vote on this June 26th is that there's no duplicates between what we're approving tonight and what is going to be approved in two weeks.
What about what's already on for tonight's approval, like the three elevators that is part of tonight's approval? That's what I'm getting at.
So Mike, can you just check with them and see if they actually are charging us for three elevators?
Right, right.
Or whatever else might be on.
Or whatever else, correct.
And send out just a quick memo and explain that, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Because we should probably identify that before you sign it. So we can approve the money tonight.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
So any, any other questions on this?
Well, then how can we vote on it if it's not the same contract? It's going to change.
The 325 that we're voting on tonight will not change.
We're also approving the contract. We're approving the contract.
You're approving a contract for an.
Right, Amendment 1.
Correct. That that wouldn't change.
Because they.
Amendment 3 can change.
Right, they were gonna, we were gonna do this work prior.
So what you're asking is if it goes from three elevator items to two elevator items?
On this document, yeah, I don't believe that's.
Well, we need to reapprove it.
We would need to reapprove it.
I'm asking them.
No, no, we don't, if on Amendment 1 and 2, if it goes from, we're assuming that, this could be as simple as, this is supposed to be, first of all, we need to verify that there really are two versus three elevators. We need to verify that for one. For two, is the amendment, the amendment that we're passing tonight is alre, I'm not going to just repeat what I'm saying. It's an obligation that we already have.
Of amount of money.
And the scope is this, is what has already been approved. They are copying the scope over to Amendments 1 and 2. As John is getting at, we need to now verify that Amendment 3 is not a duplicate of anything that is already being completed, that they might be showing us the total, whether they're showing us the tally of the work and it's only Phase 2 that they're accounting for, whether they truly are duplicating anything, that's what Todd and I need to look into. But that does not change the obligation or the scopes found in Amendments 1 and 2.
Although I was pointing out, there were some duplicates in.
In the document itself.
Prior to Phase 2, prior to Amendment 3. There are some duplicates in there. The easiest one to point out, the easiest one that I saw were the elevators because it's numbered, you know?
So it could simply be, so land to your point then, would we need to come back and do something June 26th if there is a change to Amendments 1 and 2? We could certainly do that if we needed to, or have it just be a part of Amendment 3 where there could be a duplicate and say, well, we're deducting 2 grand. Or we're deducting this or deducting that off of our.
Because it does say in here, the scope of services, oh, it's part of the contract.
Yeah.
And so if you go, if we vote on this and then you change that, to me that, then the board didn't approve it as it was supposed to be approved. I mean, we didn't approve it then, it gets changed after we vote on it.
We would have to have a.
It should be accurate.
Worst case, we'd have to have Amendment 4 that they would have to agree to, but then it would be.
Correct.
Look pretty bad on them if they charged us for working on, for example, for the easy example, three elevators.
So I'm trying to look up, I gotta look back.
Okay, I'm on the contract, I'm sorry, Amendment Number 1 to pact agreement. Isn't that what we're voting on in the second meeting tonight?
Correct, Amendments 1 and 2.
And that says under Number 11, the scope of services outlined in Exit B is hereby amended by the services set forth. To me, that says you can't really amend it. You know, we just vote on this before next meeting?
What is going on?
Lay this over?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're getting too deep away of. Well, so we're just supposed to be just.
We could do that too. We could do that. We could just vote on everything June 26th and make sure it's all clean and everything's lined up. We can certainly do that.
I think that would be cleanest.
Yeah, okay.
Most clean.
Yeah.
English reading.
Yeah. Yeah, that's okay to do. Because the obligation, I mean, the three, the obligation's going to be there. What we're making sure is that everything lines up cleanly and that there is no duplication across, across the board.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think that's important. And if anyone wants to go to the public to check on what we've approved, it's going to be the same thing.
Sure.
What we approved tonight.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the point.
Let me just, can I just interject here? So we've already approved those line items last year.
That's the thing, I'm going back to October and I'm going back to September.
So we've already approved these. So our chance to catch it was last October. We missed it and we voted on and we approved that last October, what we're looking at here. So we would have to go back, not just change where we're voting on now, but ask them to change what we already approved and signed last year. So we missed it, if that is the case, we missed it last year. And now we're going to come back to them and say, by the way, we approved this work last October, we missed it. Are you really going to do this? So now it'd be more of a clarification because we can't change what we've already approved last year. Does that make sense?
I don't remember seeing this itemization. It was probably there, but I just don't remember seeing the itemization last year. What's that, I'm sorry? What's that, I'm sorry?
But all they're doing is copying over the scope from last year, so this isn't recreating the wheel.
So, why do we-
The new part is Phase Two.
So, why do we re, need to reapprove? Is it because we moved that 325?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all we're approving, is that we're doing the 325 this year, not the individual line items.
Maybe as part of Amendment Three, when we go back through the Phase One table and look at the Phase Two table, maybe part of Amendment Three or maybe an Amendment Four is to set the record straight with these line items, remove the duplicates.
And go either direction, if, if they truly are-
Well, we only have two elevators, though.
Okay, so, at this point, um, you'll just follow up on those couple items and give us a memo as to what it means.
Absolutely, and, and so, I, I, I just wanna verify, I, I have no problem holding everything off until June twenty-sixth if that's what we need to do and approve all amendments at one time. The idea was to show, to break out these amendments, that the 325 and 325 are simply obligations offset, but if we wanna wait to make sure everything just reads better than what it currently is and lined up appropriately, we can certainly do that, it's, it's beating the June thirtieth deadline as well.
Yeah, I guess that would be my only concern, one of the reasons that we did this fiscal piece was to try to do it as early as we could in June, should there be something that happens through the budgeting process with the governor, because we all know that the Act thirty-two piece of it is likely going to be removed from it, and so, maybe a risk, maybe not a risk, that between now and June twenty-sixth, I don't know, you think we're-
No, I, I think we're okay, I, I think, I think we're okay.
Even though that's planned, as long as we do it before July one, okay? I just want to be careful that that doesn't throw off anything, okay? That'll good.
Okay, so, we're, we're voting on that in the next meeting, so, I guess it'll give us all some time to think when we reach that point, if we decide to wait on that vote, we can at that point, or we can vote then. So, a- at this point, we're, with the second, um, most of the questions are focused on Phase One, not really on Phase Two, but we're just gonna make sure that there's no duplicates in Phase Two.
Correct, correct.
Perfect. Any other questions about Phase Two, Amendment Three?
Well, one of the, I'm sorry, one of the concerns that I have is that, that whether it was a document error, that there was just a line left in that shouldn't have been, whether it was an error that they thought there were three and there were only two, whatever it may be, this isn't the first time that Train has handed us a document that has been less than comfortably accurate. So, I would appreciate it if we pushed back on our vendor.
Sure.
Because there was presentations that Train gave to us and documents that had things that were already completed, that were even relevant in there and they left it in.
Sure, sure.
So, clearly, I would like to put the burden back on them.
Yep. Just to make everyone more comfortable, I mean, Todd and I will certainly work with Train, and it is ultimately our decision about what is in that scope and to make sure everything is clean and accurate, um, and it's the same thing that we did, that Matt and I did in the process in the, in the late, in the winter of last year. So, understood.
All right, any other questions about this? Luann, you started with one.
No.
No? Any other questions?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, E is Act thirty-two resolution.
So, that's the resolution. Uh, this is the same resolution that was passed last year, um, showing that, uh, the, the Board has the authority to levy for the six hundred thousand. Again, the idea here is to stabilize the mill rate in seventeen eighteen and yet still complete these projects that we find in our, in our, um, ten-year plan and that, uh, our buildings and grounds finds important to get done, um, with this, with this source. So, um, exact same, um, piece that, uh, you, you approved last year, and, and again, this would come to the Board, um, on June twenty-sixth as well. Uh, right now, in state law, you can amend this resolution all the way prior to October first, so, that's right now in state law, um, according to what happens in the budget, if there is changes, um, we'll respond to those changes accordingly, um, we're hearing different things on Act thirty-two, but, um, right now, this would be a resolution to beat that June thirtieth deadline and get the things done that we need to get done and still stabilize the mill rate, and then, if we are able to throughout the, um, summer and fall as variables come in prior to October one, we can always amend this resolution if we need to.
This says attached, attachments included, which attachments pertain to this, because I couldn't sort them out?
Um, there may be no attachments at all.
It's, it's number nineteen, it's the page right after it.
They're not right after, though, in the board packet, it's, it's been, it was difficult to figure that out this time.
It's the one right after, it's included in the, the packet, right? It's not an attachment.
It's in the packet, but it's not with the cover?
That's all.
Yeah, it is, for this one, it is. For the resolution, it's the next page.
Yeah, that, that's what I saw, there wasn't an attachment, okay. I just didn't know if there was something else I should be looking for.
Some or not, it would be helpful to keep it that way, I like it when they're right attached.
But we did this because of the size of the attachments, so that's why they're in the folder, yeah?
But it's back and forth, back and forth.
Um, I, I, so, I withdraw that question, because I, I just wasn't sure if, if it was referring to this or if there was another attachment that I couldn't find. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the resolution? Okay, and then F is the employee handbook.
Um, so, kind of, a- again, just from the format issue, um, same, the same format as in the other piece, and I, um, we can work on a, a different way to kind of make that maybe look, uh, better or nicer as far as what was added, deleted, but on the, uh, on the front page, um, or on the, on the board proposal page, we simply, um, kind of simply went through the packet and just tried to highlight at least where to look as far as changes, um, that were made. Um, two things that we do want to address that, that were, were brought up and, and that we need to kind of already kind of, uh, change as far as the handbook goes, and what, I'll provide the Board a memo on, on those additions. Um, one piece, um, that we need to recognize is on, uh, our vacation payouts, which, um, is on page, um, nineteen. Uh, in this instance, uh, we, we put in language that says vacation payouts can be paid out based on invested amounts, so, for example, if, um, your business manager joins you on July one and, uh, leaves December thirtieth, um, I've been given vacation days, but I've only been here half a year, and thus, if I'd used all my vacation days, I would owe the district back some of the monetary value of the vacation days that I've owed. Uh, one thing that was brought to our attention, and we're verifying when this change was made, is that specifically our custodial group, um, was given, um, vacation time based on the year that they had previously worked, and that, that that had changed over maybe as, as, um, early as the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school year when they started to do that differently. And so, what we need to address with that is to put a date in that vacation accrual area that says if you were an employee, a custodial employee hired prior to twenty fourteen, fifteen, you've accrued your vacation already, and thus, there is a total payout that will be given for the vacation day, um, time, because you've earned it. So, we will get that into the employee handbook as, um, and, and I'll kind of show you kind of what that language will be in a memo. The second piece, mm, the second piece that we didn't address in the handbook, and I did not put in the proposal, uh, but I do wanna say it, say it, and then, again, give you some clarification in the, in the, in another memo, same memo, would be that, um, for personal leave, we are getting rid of the term "personal leave" for those who have vacation time. In other words, personal leave and vacation are, they're the same thing, vacation is personal. So, we wanna get rid of that personal leave, um, for our twelve, for all those who have vacation time, which is really our twelve-month employees. Um, the personal leave right now, for example, for our custodial group and for our, um, business office, twelve-month employees, personal leave was, was given in addition to vacation, and thus, thus, they got their vacation according to a schedule and then were given two, two additional personal leave days. One was truly an extra vacation day, and one could be withdrawn from their sick day bank for, for two personal leave days. Um, what we're gonna do is, that personal leave language is no longer gonna be in there for one year, for the seventeen eighteen school year, we'd like to give those twelve-month people a, an additional vacation day just to transition from the move from personal leave to no personal leave as far as vacation goes.
Question?
Yes.
So, uh, changing from personal to vacation, and this might be more of an HR kind of a, kind of a thing or between you and, and maybe Nancy, um, were there different parameters when something was called personal leave, like it needs a different kind of lead time or a different, uh, approval path or anything like that?
It's an awesome question, so, there is what's, there's what's in the handbook and there's what was practiced. Practiced was, it was vacation.
Okay, so, essentially, there wasn't any shorter approval process, there wasn't any, uh, different, like, different level of administration it had to go to or anything like that?
No, no, nothing like that, correct. Still be your direct supervisor would say, yes.
With the same amount of lead time required and everything, okay? Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, under the, um, on page five, under the "at-will" statement.
Hmm. What page is that, Nancy?
Page five.
Oh, page five, you said that already.
But I can say it again.
I'm totally paying attention.
Page five.
Uh, the "at-will," okay, yes.
So, um, the last full sentence-
Ah, yep.
The board requests on an employee provided in writing at least how many days?
Yep, I think what had been in there was usually, um, thirty, um, however, that can be a discussion point, um, and I think that's kind of why maybe we may have-
Because this statement was not, did not exist in Act-
It wasn't, but there was some language for other employee groups that had stated thirty days, but then the question is for an "at-will" employee, is thirty days really an appropriate amount of time, or if it's at-will, either way, back and forth, it can be no lead time at all.
I mean, I think it's nice if they give at least two weeks-
Yep.
-notice, I mean, that's pretty standard.
Yep.
Can you give me an example of an "at-will" employee?
Uh, support staff.
Okay, thanks.
Someone who doesn't have a contract.
Correct.
That's where I was going.
All right, any other question?
Very good, thanks, Nancy. My memo's getting longer.
You had fun with that.
Okay, thank you.
Can we go back, are they losing a day as a transition? Of taking away personal, are they losing a day?
So-
The following year?
It's a, so, in essence, yes, they lose one day.
Why are we doing that?
Um, so-
Why don't we just add that to the vacation, that's what they've already got?
Well, the, the discussion went something like, like this, when, when you lay out kind of what the vacation looks like for, um, a lot of our support staff and the schedule that's laid out there, majority of our support staff have somewhere between fifteen and twenty-five vacation days, many above twenty vacation days. So, when you start to lay out kind of what their year looks like with sometimes twenty-plus vacation days, ten holidays, twelve sick days that are replenished every year, um, it's a, it's a good benefit. And so, in this instance, um, yes, could you add a vacation day that's not off the table, but that benefit is already very rich in that, um, usually vacation day employees simply don't have that additional personal leave language that would usually just get taken out, and that it would just be the vacation according to the schedule that was put forth. So, we have a vacation day schedule that is followed, um, based on years of service, and so, that would not be following that years of service anymore, we would have to adjust that.
I'll, I'll be curious if we get pushed back on that, because it's kind of a mindset, even though I understand the change.
Yeah.
People think of like a dentist appointment as not vacation, but if I could have a personal day for that kind of stuff, you know?
Well, well-
That's-
In that instance-
It's a mindset, right?
Right, but in, in that instance, just, I'm just going off of your example, that's sick time.
Okay.
So, so, the personal leave was truly vacation, and, and they have vacation, we all have, you know, we, we twelve-month employees have vacation. Um, so, I know personal leave was, was taken out, um, you know, just across the board from administrators on, uh, across, this isn't something that's just, um, on our-
Teachers have it, though.
Teach, correct.
Teachers keep it, I just want to be very clear on that, okay?
Everyone who does not have, yeah, teachers keep personal leave, everyone who does not have vacation, a twelve-month employee who has vacation no longer has this personal leave language.
Which is primarily custodians and district office assistants.
Yep, and then if you wanna widen it out to what's already occurred, administrators as well.
And if you read in here, actually, you already explained it in your cover letter that's in our packet, there are four groups that will maintain personal leave, it's, it's listed under page eleven bullet points, coordinators, teachers, aides, and ten-month secretaries. So, you already, he already outlined that for us.
Because we prefer not to take a day away if that's possible.
So, we did discuss this in the personnel committee, and what, the reason that we recommended just, um, giving, taking away one day is because they have to take it out of their sick time, so if they have to take it out of their sick time, they can just take a day out of their sick time.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, so, item seven is comments from the school board regarding how much of future consideration. As a reminder, no discussion will actually be taken at this time. Do we have any topics we'd like to discuss in the future? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to eight, board member announcements, do we have any announcements?
Again, I just wanna echo the congratulations to all of our graduates and to all of our staff for another fine year, I always find that event, even though hot, one of my favorite to watch the kids celebrate, it's what we're all here to do, and I thought it was a wonderful day.
I was able to watch the, uh, webcast of the Tommy Awards last night, and my daughter all of a sudden say, "Hey, uh, we're on," and so, we opened the show, and, uh, I believe she said we won the award, a couple of awards, I don't know yet.
I was gonna ask for Jackie, I, Tom, Tom stepped in today, he didn't say anything, it was like hell.
Yeah, I was at the Ovation Center in Madison.
Yeah.
Grant was doing a great job doing the MC type thing, it was pretty cool, he did a whole song, too.
Any other?
I was able to make it, um, towards the end, over to the, uh, middle school, the eighth grade dance, they looked like, when they have that much energy at nine o'clock at night, I, I don't know how you got through the day, um, the beginning of the day, so, but they, a good time was had by, looked like every single eighth grader that was there, so it was a good, like a, a good little, uh, party for them, so, nice job.
I think Lisa, Lisa should put a plug in for the Rotary event coming up on the-
Not a board member, it's like Nancy can do it for me.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, there's a, there's a Rotary event coming up on, uh, June twenty-third, it's called Hops and Vines, it's at, um, uh, Whitnall Park and, um-
Burner Britannical.
Burner Britannical Gardens, and, uh, tickets are available by any of the Rotary members, and Lisa just happens to be one of the Rotary members, um, so, uh, tickets are thirty-five dollars in advance, forty dollars at the door, there's, um, wine tasting and microbrewery tasting and hors d'oeuvres, um, entertainment, I'm sure, I don't have the information in front of me, but, um, but it's always a really, uh, fun adv- it's I don't have the information in front of me, but, um, but it's always a really fun event, it's from, it's from six o'clock till nine o'clock and on Friday, June twenty-third, so. Proceeds go to the Hunger Task Force and the community projects, such as the scholarships and that, that the Whitnall Park Rotary supports, including our students and projects like that, so.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve, uh, to adjourn, excuse me, motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries, so we'll take, take five minutes and, um...
One, one minute.
Actually.
Thirty seconds.
Why don't we just go right in because we're going into...
Right, we can go into the, uh...
Alright, why don't we just, no one needs to, okay?
I'm going to the bathroom.
Wait until we have to go there.
Okay, so, if you want to go to the... Stream?
Sports court.
Storm. Stay here tonight. Drive it back.
Really?
Oh, it's gonna mess up.
Really looking though. A little windy. It is, it's really close.
The I-ride, good job, uh, Saturday night that wind was something.
Lightning straight twenty miles away.
Dropped a little rain on the, on the golf course though.
Are you going, Quinn?
No, I don't, I have no desire.
That's too bad.
Actually, I'm going to be at volleyball tournament all weekend, but, you know, I'd rather watch it on TV.
Yeah, yeah.
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 Very high complaints, no means one about the agenda. Item two is consent agenda. Uh, consent agenda items are approved all at once, and everyone being approval items. So, two A is approval of Whitnall academic. Wondering if one might be moved out. Seeing none, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, item three, three action items. The first one is personalized learning spaces construction products. Anyone having additional questions?
So, um, I was hoping to get some sort of, uh, identification on the sixty-five thousand dollar, um, bill for technology that's being, the amount for technology that's being dedicated. And nobody was able to tell me, and you, I did see that you gave us a bit of a breakout, a better breakout on the paint and all that kind of stuff. I wanted to make sure and mention paint so that, to make, make a couple of people here.
It's a bit low.
Well, so, um, but, um, but I did not see, I mean, from what I can tell, people don't really know what they want to spend the sixty-five thousand dollars on for technology. Did, did we ever come up with any, anything on that? As, as I brought up on a, at a previous board meeting about a different sixty thousand dollar item, this still, at least a portion of this sixty-five still goes into that same argument of buying new technology that is something we may be going away from. I hope you guys have your windows up.
When you got your windows up?
Yes. It's a wash.
Okay.
It'll be a clean heart.
So, um... Mike, and I think that was just, you was described it as an approximate conservative amount that you expect to spend on some sort of technology as part of the space re...
So, so, and, and this, I, I don't want to, I mean, I can just... No, it's, I mean, uh, what, what it is, is yes, it is, it is looking at the past two years and what has been purchased and keeping that line item the same as, go ahead and...
If nothing has changed, then we're rehashing the same conversation.
And we don't have a breakdown.
I do not have a breakdown.
There really wasn't a directive from the full board, I understand your concern. But if nothing's changed, I think we can just move forward.
So, so, my opinion on this, um, personalized learning spaces subject here is, um, I'm personally confused as to how we went from doing the vertical arrangement of the classrooms, of the, you know, combining ages to, then we were combining ages from first and through third, but then going horizontally, just combining all the fourth grades. And the next thing you know, we're going horizontal on everything. I'm not sure how that came about. I'm not sure, um, if then things are going to change again, if this is the right, um, the right way to be, um, carving up the building based on how much things have been fluctuating. Um, I'm not sure, as I said, on the technology, uh, dollars on there. I'm not convinced that we're being that responsible in how we're spending, um, the taxpayers' dollars on this. And we may be doing a referendum to, uh, to try to alter at least HCE in a potentially significant way, um, anyway. So, um, I'm, um, I'm just not convinced this is an effective use of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money.
And to, to, to clarify, thirty-eight thousand out of the two hundred and seventy thousand is your mark for HCE construction?
Okay.
I just want to make sure, so if we're putting out this use of money, we want to make sure when we're going to tie it to HCE, we want to make sure that we're clarifying that less than thirty-eight-five is the amount allotted for construction HCE, not close to the full two hundred and seventy dollars.
Good point. So, thirty-eight-five plus sixty-five.
No, no.
What, what I...
Hold on, would that be covered by the referendum with technology?
I think it was my turn, so...
No, John, you had your turn. I'm clarifying, my point to yours was construction related to your question about the referendum. That cost is thirty-eight-five, right?
Sure.
Okay, that was, that was my statement, has nothing to do with technology for that portion of it.
Okay.
That would be covered by the referendum.
So, if it's my turn, I will rephrase. So, the sixty-five thousand for technology plus the construction in the various buildings, where I don't really understand why we've made the various changes to what was laid out so clearly two iterations ago and in Plex, and now it's changing. I was using HCE as an example, um, that I, I'm not convinced that we're, that spending the money is a responsible way of going about, um, at least in this dollar amount is the responsible way of going about the expenditure.
Okay, any other...
I, I just want to, um, provide an alternative to that. We, we did tour those classrooms, we did listen to the staff. There have been several reports about the direction that this district was going in with Plex. So, I am not confused at all about how we went from having the one through three. And we heard that, we saw survey results of some of the challenges of that. Certainly the tutors and the, and the parents and the staff have come forward with, with wanting to move forward, personalized learning, and they have recommended, and this, more of this structure that we're supporting in this plan. And when we toured the building, I think that's when I most saw the value in how we're going to do this. And I was pleased to see that they're going to configure the, even the brick and mortar around the concept that they find working best to personalize the learning for the kids. So, we have seen multiple reports on this, and we got to tour the program, so John, I don't know. I'm just saying, that's how I see it.
Okay, that's fine, so.
Can we, can we have somebody else, make sure nobody else says a comment since you've already gotten a chance to talk?
Sure, as long as you come back, we're done.
Any other comments? Anybody? Okay, go ahead, John.
Thank you. So, I guess my question to those that have put this together is regardless of how we align the classrooms, is, are these modifications to these spaces in the buildings listed in this two hundred and seventy thousand dollar project, would those modifications be useful regardless of how we align the classrooms with the grades? So, if you change your mind as to how you want to, um, expand Plex from, say, the way it looks now to the way it was going to look or something like that, would these modifications you want to make to the buildings be equally, uh, as useful?
Yeah, as a, uh, when I'm looking at the decisions that we are making, they are based solidly upon, uh, a lot of teacher feedback, uh, family feedback, a structure that Dr. Paulson put in place in which we had two cohorts go through and identify, um, what we value about personalized learning, what our pilots have showed us, and then why we move to the structure that we currently got based upon student feedback, parent feedback, and so forth. And I do believe that this is the direction our district is going, and the space reflects the learning that we want to have in that space, so, uh, regard, I don't, first of all, I don't see us, um, changing course. And I see what we did with personalized learning as an expansion rather than a pilot or something that we do, um, holistically with all students. So, I, you know, I would definitely say, um, that it will be useful for now and for the years to come.
And I guess I would just, you know, agree with what Chris has said, but generally, I think about the one-two-three space that we had created, and we've actually, um, as we were moving back to across the grade level, um, the space that was the community room for one-two-three is now, um, uh, going back to the second grade team. Um, that second grade hall, formerly known as second grade hallway, um, will have one large community space and then two separate, uh, more traditional-looking classrooms. So, if, if, to answer your question of can we use that space if we change our minds, we clearly have it at HCE and I think, um, Edgerton and Chris is getting to do that as well.
Our one-two-three is, is going to be used by our, our first grade teachers, and they're going to utilize that space to collaborate with the team. So, um, I believe the space that we created is actually going to be more beneficial for, uh, for that horizontal.
So, basically, what you're saying is, is what I'm asking, is if, if we go ahead with this and then down the road, whether it's in a couple of months or, or five years, you decide to, uh, the idea is to change how Plex is shaped, then, um, the spaces will still be equally useful.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, then, then my only thing is the, that I just asked that we try to be forward-thinking in how we utilize the sixty-five thousand for the technology. That's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so then I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Um, item three B is Train, the first performance contract. Is anyone comfortable moving forward with a vote on this at this point, just for the first two, the three-twenty-five of work and not phase two, like originally planned?
I thought we were going to push that.
Oh, at the end, we said we would discuss it.
No, no, I lost track where we were on.
I don't have a problem with it either way because, again, because this was part of an original agreement that we had ratified back in October, and we're simply peeling off a section of it for, for a dollar amount to approve that tonight, even though it's, it's incredibly important to be accurate in that scope. And I have full faith in what Todd and Michael have discussions with Train to clarify that section and that we're looking more at the dollar amount that we're peeling off. I don't have a problem voting on it tonight. But, in approving it, but if the other board members are more comfortable getting that scope clarified first before we pass that vote, as long as we're not in any danger with any deadlines or the state, then I can also wait to the mic.
So, I have no, no problems pressing forward with this so long as, when it comes to a phase two vote, that we include not only phase two cleaned up, but, and I, and clarified, but phase one cleanup.
I guess I'm not comfortable voting on it if it's not accurate myself. If it's okay to wait, I'd prefer to get the right scope and the right language. So, just because it was wrong last October doesn't mean we should re-vote wrong.
You're right.
I don't agree with that.
But it may end up just being an explanation and not necessarily changing it because we've already approved it.
The scope, I don't know, we don't know that tonight. I mean, if you, I'd rather wait, but if you want to vote on it, I could just vote against it because I don't, I'm comfortable voting for it.
Sure, I'm just saying, we could, and, and even if we table, we could reach a point where we come back in two weeks and they say, this is the adjustment, we can't change the scopes, we're still voting on the same scope because we've already approved it, but they may amend it to say this is wrong. I mean, does that, am I explaining it correctly or no?
Yeah, I see, they would amend it and we would have to re-vote. I don't agree with that. I think if we've got a contract in the public, it's a public document at this point, I'd rather not vote on the public, make it a public document, and then change it in two weeks with an amendment. I see, I think that's what you were saying, right? We could amend it in two weeks.
That contract's already a public document, it's one that we approved last year.
Not the one we're voting on tonight though.
The scope?
Tonight, amended contract. We are not re-voting on the exact same contract. We're amending the contract to move money around. So, it's a new contract if you ask me.
To move the portion of the project from last year to this year.
Right. It's another vote.
Of course it's another vote. It's the same scope.
It's the same scope as what we approved last year.
I don't, I don't agree, it's not, we're not sure about that. There's language in here that's confusing us.
Who's, who's not sure about it?
The language in the contract, in the amend, in the, um, exhibits that we're not sure about at this point. We're not sure.
So, the language, you're saying the list.
Some of those projects may, yeah.
But if, what we're saying is if they copied that same list from what we approved last October, which is what they did, we've already approved that scope.
You're repeating that, I know that. I'm saying that we caught errors now that we're not sure about, and so why not get that fixed in this vote?
Okay. I still don't think we may be able to fix it, I think we may be able to explain why it's in there. Because we may not be able to cha, I just want to set that, we may not be able to change the scope since we already approved it last year.
There, if there aren't three elevators, we can't change that?
Well, we can certainly catch it with, uh, an amendment four that we combine with three to vote on, but we, we can't, uh, we...
So, I, I would say a couple of things. I have no problem waiting till June twenty-sixth, okay? So, lay that out there, I think June thirtieth is the, the date that's most important. Two, we can certainly have Train at that board meeting, if that is something that we, um, want in this instance. And, uh, they, in the meantime, we can, uh, meet with Train over the course of the next week and, and get them to, uh, make sure that we understand everything that's, that's here and why there may be this language. So, just, just to not labor on a point, June twenty-sixth is okay to bring all these pieces at that time.
Then why don't we just wait? Okay, so then on to three C, it's Student Handbooks.
Yeah, you have to first, we take a motion to table it, the first and the second to table.
So, a motion to table the item.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so do we have that? Okay, motion carries. Um, item three C is Student Handbooks. Do we have any additional questions?
Anybody, please? I have a question on the elementary school handbooks for medication. Let me pull it up. So, um, Edgerton, unused medication should be picked up by the parents to transportation, should protect or transportation home. Parents may recover unused medication at the school office. And then for, uh, that's for Edgerton, and then for HCE, it's, uh, unused medication not be returned home to the student to be transp, not be returned to the student, be transported home unless parents sign a release form authorizing their child to bring the medications home. I, I mean, I realize that different schools may do it differently, but what I ask is, is there any proactive way that the, the school will, the, the school will be, any proactive steps the school will be taking to remind parents that they have medicate, unused, that they have unused medication? Because some medications are, for example, schedule drugs, which means controlled substances. So, if you just chuff that stuff, now you've got issues.
Well, procedurally, our health roommate would call and let the parent know. The parents have given us the medication, and especially those that are daily doses, so they're very aware that, you know, it's there, but nonetheless, all general reminders are needed. We just went through this within the last week, and so-
Yes.
All medications have been retrieved either by parents or went home in that fashion.
So, so there isn't a case where unclaimed stuff by the last day of school gets chucked?
Unless a parent would say to us, like, if it's, for instance, um-
Advil?
Yeah, or Benadryl, or something where a parent hasn't, you know, responded and maybe isn't as concerned, but certainly not a, like a Happy Ten or a-
Or controlled substance. Does, I just, I'm just concerned about this, this doesn't indicate any, any active way of notifying them that there's unused medication, and in the case of Edgerton, it just says it'll be at the school office, which means that it's not active notification, but it's not just getting chucked.
You know, we're following the same procedure.
So somebody would contact them, let them know it's there.
Well, if they're the same procedures, then you have the procedures that Edgerton has lined out.
I, I didn't say that, Chris said that they have the same procedures.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We, and, and I'm, I can't necessarily, we have our health roommate has a letter when they call the parent, and if they say, are you sure you can't send it home with the child? We then send the letter home so it can get a signature. Some parents, depending on the grade level, don't mind if the child brings that medication home, especially those kids who aren't, like, for instance, going on a bus. If there being a direct parent pickup, that, that becomes less of a concern perhaps.
So they're not reflected in the handbook, there are proactive steps taken to try to return at least, at least prescription stuff? And what about not the prescription?
Yeah, we have the proactive health room needs to take care of that.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Any other questions? I'd sing none, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Our motion carries. So, not take a motion to adjourn in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five-one-C to discuss superintendent evaluation? Second?
Aye.
Roll call vote, John?
Aye.
Quinn?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John? Kevin? Nancy?
Aye.
Luanne?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, everybody, have a great night.